Welcome to today's city council meeting, Monday, October ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. I now call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
District one, Councilmember Casey.
Present.
District two, Councilmember Vera.
Present.
District four, Councilmember Martinez.
Present.
District three, Vice Mayor Silvera.
Here.
Mayor Lopez.
Here. Welcome, everyone. Please stand for today's invocation by Dick Connors, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Welcome, sir.
Pray together. Heavenly Father, scriptures tell us that the heaven telling of the glory of God, that the sky is declaring the work of your hands. In the beginning, we know that your eternal power and your divine nature are known through what has been paid. But we're without excuse if we do not honor you, God. We know that we are accountable to you for all that we do, all that we say, and even all we think. I ask for blessing this night at this city council meeting. Bless our leader, bless our protectors, the police department, the fire department, bless the support staff, encourage them as they do their work and help them to be faithful. We also ask blessing on the city workers, each and every one, as they do their duty, thankful for them. We hope they will know your kindness. Help us to handle the business of the city this night in a faithful, prudent, and humble way. May our thinking and our speaking and our actions be in line with your wishes for us as a community. Pray these things in the name of Jesus Christ, the Lord. Amen.
Amen. Ready? Pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. Through the republic for which it stands, patient under God, truthful, and just as for all. Thank you, everyone. For today's proclamations and presentations, we have a proclamation for Ivy LaFoon, which will be received by Paul LaFoon. In addition, at the end, we'll be having Danielle Morgan from Assemblyman Juan Alanis' office will also be presenting a certificate. On top of that, we'll be having a proclamation for the National Fire Prevention Week, and the Fire Chief Kevin Wise will be here as well. And Inspector McKean Casillas will be accepting the proclamation, and I believe Sparky the Dog is here as well. And with that being said, I'll go ahead and let's have this entire city council come follow me to the front so we can begin. For those who will be accepting the Fire National Fire Prevention Week proclamation, you can please come up here. Are you ready? Okay. Declaring October eighth through the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, as National Fire Prevention Week. Whereas the Meadowstle Fire Department is teaming up with National Fire Protection Association, NFPA, the official sponsor of the Fire Prevention Week, FPW, for more than one hundred years. To promote this year's FPW campaign, cooking safety starts with more than, starts with you, pay attention to fire prevention. And whereas the campaign works to educate everyone about the simple and the importance of actions that can take when cooking to keep themselves and those around them safe. And whereas according to the NFPA, cooking is the leading cause of home fires, home fire injuries in the United States. Unattended cooking is the leading cause of cooking fires and deaths. And whereas, year after year, cooking remains the leading cause of home fire, by far accounted for more than forty-nine percent of all U.S. home fires. Said Lorene Cartley, Vice President of the Outreach and Advocacy of the NFPA. These numbers tell us that there is so much more work that we need to do when it comes to better educating the public about ways to stay safe when it comes to cooking. Whereas Meadowstle Fire Department encourages all residents to embrace the two thousand and twenty-three Fire Prevention Week theme, Cooking Safety Starts With You. And whereas the Meadowstle Fire Department offers these key safety tips to help reduce the risk of cooking fires. Watch what you heat, always keep a close eye on what you are cooking, set the timer to remind you that you are cooking. Two, turn pot handles towards the back of the stove, always keep a lid nearby when cooking. If it's a small grease fire starts, slide the lid over the pan and turn off the burner. Three, have a kid and pet free zone, or at least three feet around the stove or grill, anywhere food, hot food, or drinks are prepared or carried. Now therefore, I Javier Lopez, Mayor of the City of Series, on behalf of the City Council, Vice Mayor Brett Silvera, Councilmember James Casey, was Linda Elviera, and Daniel A. Martinez, do hereby declare October eighth through the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, as National Fire Prevention Week in the City of Series. Or anything that you'd like to say? Let's take a quick little photo.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for recognizing Fire Prevention Week. The National Fire Protection Association has been participating in Fire Prevention Week for over a hundred years. So this year, cooking fires, cooking fires, as the mayor said, contributed approximately fifty percent of all. Last year, twenty-six hundred Americans and one hundred firefighters died in black duty. And out of those twenty-six hundred Americans who died in house fires, half of those were caused by cooking fires. So if we can reduce those, best fire is the fire that we never have. And we run several house fires in this area, and I will say a lot of are caused by cooking. So if we can take those preventive measures to not have the fire, best fire will ever, thank you.
Hey, City Council, and Silvera, would you mind? Today's proclamation, honoring the life of Ivy Jean LaFoon. Whereas Ivy Jean LaFoon was born on April eighth, nineteen thirty-nine, in San Diego, California. Attended Mountain View Grammar School, Meadowstle High School, graduated from Turlock High School. Whereas Miss LaFoon was active in her community, serving in various roles, a number of responsibilities. Whereas only LaFoon's restaurant, The Snack Shack, as well as managing the Swiss Prinzel kept her very busy in interacting with the community. And whereas she served as the Secretary Treasurer for the Series High School Bluesters Club for a number of years. And whereas Miss LaFoon was elected to the City of Series City Clerk position and opened on April twentieth, nineteen eighty-two. And whereas Ivy served as a series city clerk from April thirteenth, nineteen eighty-two, till September twenty-second, nineteen eighty-five. And whereas during City Clerk LaFoon's time in office, she executed over five hundred resolutions, a hundred and twenty city council meeting agendas and official minutes, and fifty-five orders. And whereas on September twenty-third, nineteen eighty-five, Mayor Brian Carling presented City Clerk LaFoon with the key to the city with her dedication service to the community. Now therefore, Javier Lopez, Mayor of the City of Series, on behalf of the City Council, Vice Mayor Brett Silvera, Councilmember James Casey, was Linda Elviera, and Daniel Martinez, do hereby honor the life of Ivy Jean LaFoon in the city.
Ivy was real hard. Had six kids to take care of, all played sports. She was very busy. It was, it was impressive to be, when she banned for City Clerk, elected first City Clerk. That's, I think it was seventy-three percent of the votes. So that was a pretty good. Whatever you want to call it. But she, she got a big majority in the votes. Thank you, very.
Thank you. I wasn't sure if Assemblymember Juan Alanis' office was here at all. Can you please step up?
Good evening, Councilmembers, everybody. My name is Danielle Morgan. I'm on behalf of Assemblymember Juan Alanis. And I have a certificate of recognition for the National Fire Prevention Week. Thank you for working to educate and inform the community about fire safety. I don't know, somebody wants to receive this?
I'll go ahead and receive it.
Okay. And I also have a memoriam in honoring the life of Ivy Jean LaFoon. If I could get the family or one of the representative's family to come receive this memoriam. On behalf of the California State Assembly, the Assemblymember expresses his deepest sympathy.
Thank you very much. Moving on to citizens' communication. While the City Council welcomes and encourages participation in city council meetings, adopt the rules allow no more than five minutes, Resolution Number two thousand and seven one oh six, for expression of non-agenda items, matters under their jurisdiction of the city council and not on posted agenda, may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the city council from taking any action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda, unless it is determined to be an emergency to the city council. Citizens are entitled to address the city council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. Anyone wishing to address the city council must adhere to the rules of decorum. The rules of decorum are posted outside the chamber doors. And I will hand this over to the city attorney. She will address Zoom comments for the evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. As you will note, the agenda for tonight does have a disclaimer that Zoom participation via comments via Zoom participation tonight are being suspended temporarily, pending discussion by the city council on an agenda item on tonight's agenda to discuss the council's wish on how to move forward with Zoom meetings in the future and guidelines and participation from the public and staff members and consultants remotely. So because of that, and as a result of the last city council meeting, there have been a series of what have been described as Zoom bombings regionally, and actually statewide, there've been several public agencies who had to deal with the same issue. And so because of that, in light of that, we have an agenda item to address that tonight.
Thank you, Nubia. Or any in-person comments, please step up to the podium. Is there anybody here in this room that would like to make a comment today?
Dave Pratt of Series. I'm finding more and more of the kids and some adults riding on the sidewalk don't see too pedestrian. I've, I've even almost been run over by some e-bikes. I even had a dog told me I need to get off the sidewalk. Another issue, I'm seeing more cars got loud bufflers early in the morning and late in the evening, they're revving up their noisemakers going through neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Next person that would like to speak?
Dean Akeley, Series. Last council meeting on September twenty-fifth, something to hear, doesn't hear, but something to see with all the expressions on everyone's face, uncalled for, totally uncalled for. Again, go back in some history here of the city and the council. Seems to be a learning. And the police have been through this many times, every day. They have certain things said to them that are part of the decorum. And they call this a learning curve. From May ninth, two thousand and twenty, September twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, is a hundred or five hundred and thirteen days. What happened the other day for, for the last council meeting, I don't condone, and I suppose anybody in this room. So after all this time, the five hundred and thirteen days, what is root for derogatory remarks? Why were individuals calling a citizen at a council meeting on May ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, an exception to the series city council rules and procedures of decorum? Is this a learning curve, the cost of a citizen? Right is still right and wrong is still wrong, and counsel, answer is wrong. When the elections come, hope the people behind me, I hope the people are listening or read the newspaper. Hope they consider all these things when it comes to election time. Make the right decision. On another note, again, back to the police department, I want to thank them for some of the recent things that they've taken care of. And of course, code enforcement, they're doing a fine job too. And city needs to find some money somehow, get more traffic officers out there. Talking to one of the officers, police station, I got a call the other day, and they told me that only reason they can't get certain qualified people is they naturally go other places to seek a better wage. And supposedly, one of the lowest being in cities as far as police department salaries. You know, we can use that art money, take something away from somewhere, start something for at least a, a year so we can get some officers out there, whether it's cars or motorcycles. We have that problem. We all see it every day as the traffic getting worse in every city in the United States from what I hear. But we only live in this community, and we need to take care of our own. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Before I move on to any yellow cards, is there anybody else in the room? Okay. Ashley Shaw. Are you here? Please step up. General comment on dispatch.
My name's Ashley Shaw. I have a bachelor with four, four years now. I've watched countless dispatchers. They're the lowest paying our county and surrounding counties. Makes it extremely difficult for employees, makes it impossible to attract new ones. I struggle financially that we get. I feel like I'm being forced to find employment elsewhere. Been short-staffed for the entirety of my there's no end in sight for that. The mandatory overtime greatly affects my mental health and all aspects of my life. I recognize a few from the awards ceremony a few weeks ago. But last year, I worked to end parts of overtime, not include my regular time. Well, I know we'll never compete with Bay Area wages. We can compete rounding us a livable wage. I want to stay at Series. Not an option. I am forced to look somewhere else because of every single dispatcher love to stay at Series. And all seven tiered dispatchers that work full-time have applied out to neighboring agents. Due to the wages, mandatory overtime, and the balance of work-life balance, we don't have it at all.
Ashley, there, everything that you've said today is on everybody's mind. And I know that we can't make any promises now, but the only thing I can tell you is that we will do everything in our power. Because I, you just said something that resonated. You don't want to leave Series. I know you don't. And the, the way that our economy is going in this country, I think it's, there has to be a conversation. So thank you, Ashley, for being brave and coming up here in front of us and telling us your story. Thank you. Michelle. Also on the topic of dispatch.
Name is Michaela Richter. I have
Sorry about that, Michaela.
Happens more frequently than you really, not a problem. I've been a public safety dispatcher and employed with the City of Series for two years. I have been a single mother for the entirety of my time with Series, and I'm currently struggling to provide for myself and my family. No one could have foreseen the current economic situation. But it's now an issue for everyone, and it needs to be addressed, especially in our situation. Most other agencies are providing some sort of compensation, not only due to the economy, but to retain their employees. Even with working the massive amounts of overtime, as Ashley explained, I'm still not able to make ends meet without struggling and without making sacrifices. Well, I know our negotiations won't start until January. I believe the city will continue hemorrhaging employees from all departments in the city if compensation is not immediately addressed. I have no desire to leave Series. This is where I started my law enforcement career, and I had every intention of staying here for the longevity. But if things don't change financially, I will have no left to return. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next yellow card is Miss Aheart. Did I pronounce that correctly? Also on the topic of dispatch.
Hello, my name is Lorial Aheart, and I grew up in Series, and I also live in Series. As a dispatcher from another agency, I chose to come to Series PD because of the family environment and to give back to my community. I am also struggling financially and don't have any children. Coming to Series, I took a pay cut and have since been off to go back to my prior agency as well as other agencies. I want to stay with the City of Series and continue to contribute to my community, but I also feel that I will not have a choice but to seek employment with neighboring agencies that pay a livable wage. I've been with Series PD almost two years now, and I have seen numerous employees leave neighboring agents solely because of the compensation. This makes us continuously short-staffed and burdened, not only the staff, but the city with large amounts of overtime.
Thank you very much. Ladies, we've been heard, the call for action. So thank you very much for bringing this to our attention. Okay. Is there anybody else that would like to make a comment? See and none. Citizens' communication is now closed. Moving on. Is there anyone in the council that would like to declare a conflict of interest? See and none. Moving on to consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature, will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or public for special consideration. Otherwise, a recommendation of staff will be acted and acted upon a roll call vote. Is there anyone on the council that would like an item pulled from the consent calendar? Is there anyone in the public that would like to pull an item from the consent calendar? Mr. Warren, what number is that, sir?
Number ten.
And that, that number ten is not on the consent calendar, but we'll take a note of that. No worries. Okay. Bring this back to the council for motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Hi.
Councilmember Vera.
Hi.
Councilmember Martinez.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Silvera.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Moving on to unfinished business. Resolution Number two thousand and twenty-three, declaring a certain city-owned parcels as surplus land pursuant to the Surplus Land Act and authorizing the interim city manager to conduct negotiations for the disposition of the surplus parcels. Let's go to you, Mr. Home, and you're bringing this item back. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. I have a presentation for you tonight. Surplus Land Act is state law. It requires that before the city enters into any negotiations to sell city-owned property that we first must provide an opportunity to negotiate with affordable housing developers. Back in September of this year, staff brought forward more properties to consider for declaring a surplus. Who those properties are on the block containing the more mansion, those two properties have been removed from this, and we can consider those in the future. We'd like to focus on the other two properties, which I'll explain here. The Walmart's property on service. The one is Hollister and So the process is that first the city council would declare city-owned property as surplus. Then the staff would send a notice of availability to the state. That is a public document that affordable housing developers are notified about, and they have a chance to notify the city that they're interested in the property. They have a sixty-day window to respond. If they do respond, then city would enter into a good faith negotiation for the sale of that city-owned property. That negotiation period would last up to ninety days, and that would begin at the end of sixty days. There's no response, then the city could negotiate with any other prospective buyer, not necessarily affordable housing developer, but it could be, but it could be any other. The city council would make the final decision on any sale. So that's not something that you're doing tonight. That would be out in the future after. Parcel number one is, as I said, vacant land owned by the city, adjacent to Walmart Supercenter's Stormwater Basin. It has access currently off of, you know, Avenue, and back up just a second. So the overview map shows parcel one. Parcel one is next to Walmart, it's on the southeast. Parcel one is next to Walmart. It's on the southeast corner of the city. Parcel two is closer towards the city center. It's in the downtown area. Downtown area. North of Whitmore, on the east side of the freeway, at the end of Hollister Street. It's in a quiet neighborhood. But looking at parcel one, I highlighted it in green here. It currently has access from El Camino Avenue. When the diverging Diamond Interchange project is completed, El Camino Avenue will be vacated and no longer exist. The freeway, um, take their spot. Therefore, parcel one here will not have access from Service Road or from El Camino Avenue. Access will be off the top and behind Walmart is Don Pedro Road, and there will be a road that comes immediately on the side of, of Walmart down and, and curves towards parcel one, and it will bisect parcel one in order to reach Bricket Court, which is industrial businesses are located. This is a, a top-down view of the same parcel so that you can see Bricket Court to the left. You can see Walmart to the right and see the freeway interchange area. Parcel two is a vacant land by the city in a single-family residential zone. Used to contain a well site for the city. That's been abandoned and working to Public Works is, uh, safe to develop the site with a single-family home. Here's a bird's eye view of the site, looking at Hollister Street on top. North is towards the top. Arthur Way is on the side of the property. Alleyway behind the property on the south side. This is the same property, just from a different straight down. Property is zero point one seven acres approximately. It's the size, as you can see, of the other neighborhood. Size for a single family. Any questions? If you have any, thank you.
Okay. So we'll start off. Is there anyone in the chambers that would like to make a comment? Okay. Bring this back to the council. I believe there's a couple of buttons that have been pressed. I did not see who pressed it first. I'll just go left and right. Mr. Silvera, floor is yours.
Yeah, just a comment, not a question. I was a little disappointed to see the Walmart Gateway Intersection Bargaining Tool thrown out there again when it comes to this lot number one. Two separate issues shouldn't even be talked about in the same sentence, especially now that we know most of the entrance into that land will be gone at some point with the Diamond Interchange. So I was just very disappointed to see this bargaining chip thrown on the table again. I believe it should be completely taken out of there. Thank you.
Uh, Vice Mayor, do you mind if I ask for clarification? Where, where in your report did you mention that? Is it inside the report, Vice Mayor?
It's in, it's under background.
Okay. Now, Christopher, would, would, I mean, for as far as this presentation was concerned, I think you only mentioned what would be gone on the frontage road and Service Road, right? Now, is that what you're asking, Vice Mayor, to make sure that?
I'm not asking that. I'm wondering why it still says, then staff may attempt negotiations with Walmart to potentially relocate the existing Stormwater Basin and realign the Walmart Service driveway, create a four-way intersection with Series Gateway to the south. Those are two completely separate issues and process and projects, especially since we're going to lose part of that and all of the access to it from the west or the south. So I'm just wondering why that's even on here.
Uh, Martinez, before you move on, I have, uh, Vera, she wants to floor next. Are you okay, Vice Mayor? Can I move on? Councilmember Vera.
I guess my question, I guess, for Ben, understanding just from looking at the report and also kind of along with what Vera said regarding the Walmart. I'm just trying to understand how, will all of that two acres or a little over two acres still be accessible for development with the new interchange? Or part of that land not going to be developmentable because of easement with the new interchange?
If we could also, while you're answering that question, please bring up that parcel so we can see. Christopher.
First. There we go. So there are a couple of questions, and if I may, I'll try to answer all of them.
Sure.
The reason that there was a few sentences in the staff report that talk about potential solution to a completely separate issue is for transparency purposes. Doesn't mean that this is tied to that. It's not. It's just talking about it as a potential that could happen, depending on future decisions the city council make. So it's not, any, any deal with Walmart is not happening tonight. Only in there for transparency. As far as a, access onto this parcel in the future, I'm from Don Pedro Road. If you look closely, there's a curved line that comes, um, straight down south, and then it veers off towards the left at about seven o'clock towards that green line. That's roughly where the new street would be. Would continue through parcel one and it up at current end of Bricket Court right there. So parcel one, so that's not the APM. Simplicity sake, dissected by this new road. There would be some access to parcel one, but it may not be situated ideally and feasibly for commercial use since it would come off of a quieter street and you'd have to kind of wrap around the block to get to it. You'd have to go down Don Pedro Road, and then you'd have to go down this new rope. Um, maybe called Bricket Court, or it may have a new name in the future. Uh, there wouldn't be ready access to a major street like Madrid. So this is kind of tucked away, in other words. For use. However, if it were hypothetically purchased by Walmart, then some things could be moved around and that land could be used effectively. Um, but that remains to be seen, and we haven't discussed with Walmart interest. So that's a discussion for a future day, and it's not tied to this action.
I think my question is of that land, how much of it is realistically being, would be developmentable, or, and if a developer wanted to come in, I think I've referred a few that were in, and they've I've heard some feedback. How much of it could they really develop on as opposed to how much is going to become a road or other easement or public right-of-ways? But I want to go and say we have two and a half, two acres of development when realistically, we want to put a road right through the middle of it, so we couldn't put an apartment complex there because the road would be there.
Uh, perhaps not. There would probably be about two acres that could be developed. South side of the road of the, of the new hypothetical road, it would just over one acre and on the north side of it would be less than an acre.
Would that, um, south part, kind of diamond area, would that also become part of the road and then eventually become an easement? With the interchange?
Very far south end of parcel one would be used for the interchange project, but it would be a very small part of southernmost end of parcel one.
Okay, so there is still quite a bit of easement that's still going to be a part of the interchange. It's not the full two acres then.
Correct.
I understand. Thank you.
Mr. Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Christopher, Mr. City Manager, I believe when we talked about this last time, the Vice Mayor had expressed that he wanted to wait to review this until we had, uh, discussed with Walmart the possibility of moving or fixing our mistake with the island and how the uh, two parking lot entrances lined up. I don't see any conversation from, from that. I don't see anything uh, that relates that we, we started that conversation or that we're doing that. Uh, and, and again, I don't feel comfortable with this. It sounds like we're following the required surplus land act, but this is just leverage for Walmart. This is us trying to get the land okayed to sell so we can try and get Walmart to do what we would like instead of, like Vice Mayor said last time, fixing our mistake. So I, I don't see any conversation. You know, you're saying hypothetically, you're saying maybe one day, but all this sounds like is that you're trying to get it to Walmart and you're trying to leverage it to fix a mistake that the city made. So I don't see a conversation. That was the Vice Mayor's big request when we did it, was that he wanted to wait and see what we can do with Walmart and how we could fix it, and none of that was addressed.
Councilmember Martinez. So basically we have preliminary discussions with them just to sit there and have a, a rough idea if they're even interested. Uh, this is just part of the process we have to go through to get this up and available to, for anybody to touch forward with it. Um, background section that relates to Walmart, uh, that would have been premature to put anything in there right now. We're just going through the process to make this land available. And then once that goes through the sixty-day process, then we could really start having negotiations with anybody who would be interested in that parcel.
Just to clarify, I, what I asked for was to try to move forward with Walmart to get them to move the entrance on Service Road over to meet with the gateway entrance. And that was all I asked at that time. I didn't have anything to do with this parcel one. Just start the conversation with Walmart and find out if they're willing, and if maybe they are, what are we going to do to, to, uh, right that wrong?
Nubia. And my question to you is, for this process for surplus, we have to put it out for which would consider a bid, right? Ninety days according to the state of California, correct?
It's an offer, yes.
It is. Okay, so once we open it up, these preliminary conversations, regardless of what everybody's saying up here, it is not really concrete. It is, we have to go through that process before any types of negotiations begin. And those negotiations would only happen on the direction of the city council, correct?
The twofold. The city can't enter into negotiations with anyone until the surplus land act requirements have been met.
Period.
Period. So once that's done, and, and that hasn't really happened, again, they're, they're peripheral discussions. They're not firm discussions that have taken place because we have to follow this process first. Second, um, the council has, uh, has already addressed and indicated uh, the, the need or request to have feedback and input on this. So that's something that we'd be bringing back separately as well. Again, the idea is here, there is extra land that is vacant. In order to even consider it, selling it, leasing it to anyone or anybody, you have to go through a certain process. So staff went through and made a, a list of vacant properties that could be eligible, and that's what we're bringing back to council. And so yes, it really should be a separate issue from the Walmart discussions. It has been brought up in the past, and so I think staff's, um, idea was, again, to be consistent in terms of what's been presented to council, but yes, there's separate discussions, separate issues.
Right. So regardless of if Rosalinda would in the future prefer housing versus Walmart, that's irrelevant. What's here today is for us to pass this so that way we can begin any types of negotiations.
Anytime.
Even if that even happens, you still need direction from the city council.
Yes, yes.
Another comment. So I do have it up. You too? Go ahead. Oh.
You press your button, but I did see, uh, Vice Mayor.
Answered my question that I had.
Well, you didn't. Okay.
Well, it just seems like this parcel number one is still in limbo quite a bit on, with a lot of possibilities. The first being if it goes through the process, that somebody might want to build, build portable housing on there, which would be great, but that throws a wrinkle into all of the situation that we're talking about with the, with the, uh, interchange. With the entrance into Walmart. I would suggest we look at this resolution without parcel one on it.
So, so this is where I believe there's a little confusion. Today, the only act is for the surplus to be put out for ninety days, and then you're, you're, once that is complete, and we have to put it out to bid for, for the public, right? Whether it's somebody wants to bring affordable housing, or there's some type of negotiations from any other agent, any other company. Then at that point, we can decide whether or not we will accept that.
So once you, once you determine this to be surplus land, we have to provide notice to a list of agencies that have been put on the list.
And they have to put in bids.
And they, and if there's interest, they submit a letter of interest to the city for entering into negotiations for that parcel. They have the priority.
Get first dibs.
To, to get first dibs and negotiate with the city. If the city receives such a letter of interest from these designated agencies for housing, then the city is required to move forward in discussions with them first.
According to the state of California.
Yes.
So it's almost like even if we had our own plans, that is the process with the state passed.
Yes, and, and the idea behind that is there's a housing shortage, house, house, housing issues in the state of California. So the legislature has put a rule in place that forces local agencies to try to first prioritize housing projects.
Correct.
Before doing anything with extra, what's been deemed extra land. So, so that is, so that's the requirement. If there is no interest and the city doesn't receive, um, a letter of interest within that timeframe, then the city can enter into discussions with other entities.
Right. So at that, at that point, regardless of, I mean, I'm just so everybody's clear, I'm neither in favor or against. I'm just wanting to get clarification on the process because the state of California obviously has a heavy hand in this decision-making. It kind of ticks away from local municipalities' control, which is an argument for another day. I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that because I didn't want anybody confused on, on exactly what the purpose of today was. Uh, Mr. Silver, did you still have your hand raised or did you, I'm quick. Okay, uh, Mr. Martinez.
City Attorney, can we vote on them separately?
Yes. So, well, my recommendation on that is if the council still feels uncertain about parcel one and its status as, as surplus land, you can approve the resolution removing it. So you can still vote on the, on parcel two as surplus land. And we can continue that discussion for another time, bringing back at a, at a future meeting.
And if we don't, it just, it just stays there in limbo. There's nothing that can be done until we bring it back for a surplus again.
Correct. Because, because.
That's pointless. I think that we should just move forward and, and then the discussion will come back to us regardless. We will have the opportunity to, to have our say as a council.
If the council decides to, to pull parcel one off of the list for consideration tonight, then that parcel is still city-owned.
Right.
City, but the city will not be able to discuss with anybody, leasing, selling, anything until you make a decision on that. And again, it's something for the council to consider. Um, we can't move on it in any way, shape or form without council direction on this. And once, once you have started this process, we do have to see it through.
Right.
So once you've said this is surplus, we're required to follow the rules, and if you get a letter of intent that, um, is a, a good faith negotiation based off of land appraisals, et cetera. There, there is that idea that the city has to move forward with, with selling it and moving forward with disposing of that property as it has deemed now.
Right.
Starting that process.
Okay, that's, that's understandable. Okay. That is, that is all I have. Is there any additional comments or questions? Do you have a comment or question? Any other additional comments? I mean, is there anything that you guys want to add? Are you guys still firm on what you, what you previously said? I just kind of want to get a better understanding where you guys sit now.
I'll make a motion to approve this resolution minus parcel one.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Hi.
Councilmember Vera.
Hi.
Councilmember Martinez.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Silvera.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
No.
Motion passes four one.
And moving on to item number eight. City Council Rules and Procedures Workshop and Approval of Guidelines for Telephone Conference Use in the City Council Meeting for Staff and Consultant Participation and Public Comment Restrictions. Also you, Nubia.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening again, Mayor and Council Members. Before you tonight is a comprehensive agenda item to continue our discussions about the rules and procedures that we started several months ago. In light of the previous city council meeting and the events that took place that night, we have identified an additional topic that's related to the rules and procedures for the council's consideration. Now, before I begin with the presentation, um, I'd like to get some direction from council because we have a couple of options of what we can do tonight. This is a comprehensive agenda item. However, originally the plan. originally the plan was to have the rules and procedure workshop continue as part of a separate special meeting. We can do that. So we can separate the two items. We can have the council provide direction on wanting to special, schedule a special meeting separately to address the rules and procedures alone at a different time, noticed, and agendas, et cetera. Or the council can move forward on discussing the two items. The council could also say, we prefer to just continue this item entirely. But my recommendation is to at least address the teleconferencing policy so that we can get direction on the council. As I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we have suspended Zoom comments temporarily because we need council direction on what you want to do moving forward. So again, staff's recommendation is to at least discuss that. But I will leave it up to the council for, um, direction on, on how you want to address this agenda in total.
And I just want the council to take in consideration that we've actually, we've made several attempts to have a workshop and it has not worked. Uh, Doug, can you provide some context? How many times have you put out to the council? I know that in respect to the council, you guys are very busy. Don't get me wrong. But how many times have we tried? Probably about three times, right? Okay, so I just want everybody to be in consideration of that. I would also add that if, if we get too knee deep into the councils and procedures and everybody would like to stop and continue the rest, I think that's a, that's an actual good, I think that'd be a good option. We did that last time because the council members were getting tired. There's, there's a lot that goes into this. And I want to make sure that we get it right. I don't want to rush this at any point whatsoever. But that's just my take. Council?
Mr. Mayor, I would suggest that we, uh, we discuss the commenting over Zoom and that we we push aside the, the, uh, the workshop until we can set a special day for it. I feel like if we really want to get into it and be detailed and really focus on it, we're gonna need more time than we have allotted with what we still have on the agenda, closed session and everything else, all the discussion items and, and, uh, we still have more coming down. I would suggest that we, uh, discuss the Zoom issue and that we table it until we can all get together and have a, an agendized meeting on the workshop.
Okay, we'll go left to right. Silveira, are you feeling the same way or same way? Uh, Rosalinda?
Feel the same. We spent a lot of hours just on the part we did get done. And I don't think we should rush it fifteen times. I don't know if anyone wants to be here till tonight. Trying to get.
Casey? Okay. Well, there you go. You have your consensus, but we will be doing Zoom, having the Zoom conversation tonight, right, everybody? Okay, so there you go. I'm available. So let me know when you guys want to get together for that workshop. Make sure you provide donors because we'll be there for a long time.
And, and just for clarity for the public, the public, once you open up for public comment, can comment on anything that's been included as part of this agenda packet, but the council,
That is correct.
The council will, based off the direction we have tonight, we will schedule a separate workshop, a special meeting to continue the rules and procedures portion.
Okay.
So with that direction and clarification, then I would direct the council to, um, page three or page three of the staff report so that we can discuss what the council will be taking, um, or giving direction on tonight. And that's guidelines for teleconference usage in city council meetings for staff consultant participation and public comment restrictions. So again, to recap, uh, for the council, um, it, it has not been limited to series. There have been a series of Zoom bombing events throughout California in the last couple of weeks. It did seem to stem very close in time to when our last city council meeting occurred. And so based off of that, staff's bringing back this item for a direction from the council on the council's wish to use, use Zoom or other teleconferencing platforms in the future. If the council will remember last, I believe it was last year, following the lifting, well, early, actually it was earlier this year, lifting of the executive orders and exceptions that were put in place for a number of years because of COVID. We did formally request direction from the council on what you wanted to do about Zoom. Give you a little bit of refresher. The way that teleconferencing works under the government code is twofold. If you will remember, we discussed what I deemed the old original rules, which are if a council member is not present in person for a meeting but wishes to participate remotely, there's very specific protocols we have to follow. We have to agendize the meeting at the location in which they're located. You have to open it up for public comment. We have to basically open up your location if you wish to participate uh, by teleconference. Those are the original rules. Those are still in place. Following the lifting of the restrictions and executive orders and the expiration of certain laws, um, the applicable law now under AB two, four, four, nine allows for council members to participate remotely without following those rules and opening your location up to public comment or identifying your location under very specific circumstances. There's got to be a medical emergent, a medical exception or, uh, some type of emergency. So you have to fit very specific criteria. That is the only set of rule that require a public agency to allow comments, public comments via a teleconferencing platform like Zoom. Those are the limitations. This council elected to continue Zoom for public comments as we used during COVID, uh, moving forward. So what we're asking for the council today is direction on what you want to do in light of recent events, considerations, et cetera. The council basically has three options. You can move forward in, um, keeping Zoom as, as currently in place, meaning members of the public can view meetings on Zoom and provide comments on Zoom. Basically is the status quo. The council has the option to say we would allow the public to view the meetings on Zoom for convenience, but not allow public comment. Alternatively, the council could also say, we, we decided we want to do away with Zoom entirely. So there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of options and the idea of the agenda item tonight was to bring it back for discussion and get a feel for what the council would like to do moving forward. Again, keeping in mind that once we get your direction at the next meeting, we'll institute um, that, those guidelines. And frankly, whatever you decide, we will incorporate into our rules and procedures moving forward so that it's clear. Now, another component of the Zoom bombing incident and, and comments, if the council wishes to move forward in still allowing Zoom comments, there should be guidelines in place on how to deal with comments of the nature, similar nature to what we experienced at the last meeting. So if the council wishes to continue and keep everything status quo, staff's recommending that you provide some guidelines. Obviously, within the parameters of the law, we have to be clear in terms of a process on evaluating comments and making sure, a, a big component of this is that, um, that I, I guess that ever, ever growing, everlasting issue of protecting First Amendment rights and maintaining the decorum of a meeting. So if the council, again, the council wishes to move forward and continue using Zoom, we will have those parameters and guidelines set in the rules so that we have a very clear process on what to do in the future.
Okay.
So with that, I can answer any questions at the
Okay. So before that, we'll go out to the public. Is there anybody in the public that would like to make a comment on this item? Please step up to the podium.
Uh, Dave Pratt of Series. Uh, there always seems to be a lot of bad eggs out there and, and I'm and Zoom, I kind of like it because last time I was out of town, I was able to watch this meeting on, online. Yeah, but a lot of times when you're listening, people talk, the sentences, a lot of times are fractured anyways, so. If you take Zoom off completely, I'll miss, I won't be able to attend the meetings when I'm not here. Uh, but that's the way, and you know, that's the way it goes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next person?
John Warren, City of Series. Prior to COVID, we didn't have Zoom. And there's no reason we can't go back to that decorum. Uh, unfortunately, things do happen that, uh, prevent us from making life better for folks who can't attend in person. And there are people who do want to pay attention. You can see the list of names tonight that are on the, uh, watching the Zoom. If there's a possibility, and I understood the, uh, Madam Attorney, that you can have Zoom participation, but without public comment, I think serious consideration should be given to that. If a person is going to be away and wants to make a comment, they can always email the city clerk and have their comment read. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Warren. Is there anybody else who'd like to make comment? Please step up to the podium.
Ian Klyserius, not so much a comment, just suggestion. Uh, with technology out there today, uh, and you see it on televised, uh, news and stuff like that, is there anything in Zoom that can block these things as they're said, these particular word or negative issues? Uh, that's what I, in order to keep this thing going where people could call in. And, you know, like I said, you see it on the news where they bleep something out right away. Of course, it's been edited, I'm sure, but it's possibly with, hey, hey, you got the man in the moon, right? So, uh, can we look into that and see if there's some kind of technology with this Zoom that we can possibly have it blocked on these particular words that are said sometimes?
Mr. Yegli, typically when a radio broadcast or a television broadcast, they broadcast it thirty seconds to a minute ahead. Gives engineers an opportunity to be about the cuss words. Obviously, AI could probably do way better than that, which is actually not a bad suggestion, but I don't know if Zoom actually offers that.
Yeah.
But thanks for the suggestion. Is there anybody else? Okay. Now we bring this back to the council for a discussion. We have three options on the table. Is there any alternative options that were not listed that you guys would like to add to as far as three options? I'll, I'll repeat the three options. It won't be as well versed as, uh, Nubia, but the first one is move forward at as it is now, where you can view and you can comment via online. Option two would be view but no comment from online Zoom, or just number three, which is get rid of Zoom altogether. Unless there's additional comments, would you guys like to have a discussion or just go through the three? And I, it looks like I have buttons pressed. Oh, you know what, Rosalinda Bean, I didn't see it again. Sorry, Silveira. So I'll go ahead and just start with Rosalinda. Floor is yours.
I'm looking at it. I'd like, I guess the second one, the viewing with no comments, but allowing the written comments in advance, either by email, by, I think the current guideline is five PM, am I correct? Four or five, whatever the current guidelines are that we have now, I'd like to keep that policy as is. Um, I do think I still want to leave the viewing online for those parents that may not be able to come in or people that are out of town or just not able to come in. So I do like the idea of continuing the viewing remotely. Um, just not being able to public since we're not on a delay, um, and all comments are live fed.
Okay, so Rosalinda, your option is number two. Okay, yeah. Silveira, floor is yours.
As y'all know, or those of you that were here last meeting, I was not here. Um, I did go to the city clerk's office the next morning when I heard about it and listened to the recording and it was, it was terrible and atrocious. Um, not to offend anybody here or anybody listening. Sometimes things happen in our world, um, and we like to have knee jerk reactions to it. It's definitely an issue. It's definitely terrible. It may not be a problem if it only happened one time. I think we should, though, as we've done in the past, since the pandemic, allow people to make comments. If it becomes a problem, if it happens again, then we would, we would, should reconsider it then. At this point, we don't know if it's ever going to happen again. And nobody else does either because as far as I could find, it hasn't happened anywhere since last week. So it could have been a one-time Zoom bombing, like you said, and it may never happen again. And I would hate to take the access away from our constituents and give them the ability to chime in when they can't make it to the meetings because something terrible happened one time. So I suggest we leave it like it is and have clear policies on how, if it was to happen, we can mute them immediately. Thank you.
Okay, Silveira, option number one. Mr. Casey?
You're not to waste time. I, I'm supporting Vice Mayor option number one.
Okay. Mr. Martinez? What's your options, sir?
Uh, I would be in favor of, of option two. I believe that too many of our citizens do watch. I know that Supervisor watches when he can't make it. I saw that he is here in person tonight. Um, the courier watches, my wife, Mr. Casey's wife, a lot of our citizens do watch. So having the opportunity for them to participate and listen to what's going on without the comments, I would be in support of.
Okay. And then I as well believe in, I'm number two. Same here. There, I was going to mention the serious career. I mean, it's, it's important for our news, local news agencies to see what's happening in real time instead of having it on afterwards on YouTube. And that would take longer. Okay, so that your direction is, uh, Rosalinda, I don't know, uh, option two. Silveira, option one. Daniel, option two. Casey, option one. And me, option two. There is your direction.
Mayor, um, can I request a motion on that so that we're clear? And so, again, to, to clarify, option two is keep Zoom for viewing purposes only, no comment. Comments can be made in person or submitted in writing to the city clerk by the designated deadline. That's what, that's what I heard as part of that. It's, we need a motion.
Yeah.
Just so everybody's clear, remember that doesn't include consultants, people giving reports, things like that. That's just strictly comments from the public.
Correct. So, so, so again, so if the council will be clear on that too, that's a good point, uh, Vice Mayor. Zoom has served as, as a good function for consultants, um, appearing remotely. There, the restriction and staff, the restrictions on having to be here in person really only apply to the council. And again, this, this, the exception to this would be in the event a council member wishes to participate remotely. We will have to allow public comment remotely. That, that doesn't change under the law. So we, we set, we set a policy, the council sets a policy, but we do have that exception under the law. So with that caveat, if we can get a motion.
Mr. Casey, you have comments, sir?
Sure. With option number two, if they fault the procedures of sending an email to express their concern. They don't have the option under option number two to answer any questions, clarification on their email that they send in.
In real time, no, right? That, that's the challenge is that their comment would be static. It would be coming in before the, the, the council meeting as opposed to, I think, Councilmember Casey, what you might be referring to is sometimes when you're watching on Zoom, you have a question based on something that's said. And so during public comment on that specific item, you can ask for clarification. Under option two, that wouldn't be possible.
So I'm, I'm following the same thought path, process. So during the public comment portion, and someone had submitted an email and there were some questions about their email. Would they have the ability then to email the city clerk? It's just finished. It, it dies in the
So you mean like in real time?
Yes.
That, no. And that, that logistically, that would be very difficult. But at least this way it does provide them the opportunity to submit a statement or questions ahead of time, and that will be read into the record, which is the current practice right now.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, bring this back to the council for a motion.
Make a motion to approve option B of the teleconference use for city council meetings. B being, uh, being able to watch without participating with comments. Is there anything else you needed me to add?
A second.
Roll call, please.
Clarification, Councilmember Vera, seconded.
Correct.
Councilmember Casey?
No.
Councilmember Vera?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Silveira?
No.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion carries three, two.
Thank you very much. Okay. Now moving on, there's no public hearings, moving on to new business. Item number nine, which is approving the Series Economic Development Strategic Plan. Um, this goes to home, but I also had talked to the city manager previously, so if you don't mind.
Mr. Mayor, yes, we'd like to pull that.
Is, is the council in consensus with pulling that item? Left to right, yes? Casey? You okay with pulling the item? Okay, we're, we're all good. Pulling item number nine. Now, just for clarification, Nubia, because it's on this item, does there have to go to public comment?
Typically, the rule is if something's been noticed under a notice of public hearing, we have to open it up for public comment. It's really at the discretion of the council.
But not for new business.
But not for, not, again, and not for this type of item.
Yeah, just, just so the public is fully aware, we want to bring this item back so that, for a later discussion. Thank you. Moving on to item number ten. A warning, the contract for site improvements for Public Safety Training Facility Project located at Fire Station Number Three to Machado and Sons Construction Incorporated, authorizing a ten percent contingency point, uh, and authorizing the interim city manager to execute this contract. And this goes to Chief Weiss. Oh, actually, no, Kevin, I will have, have Kevin, and then I also have both of you. Whomever would like to start the conversation and explain it first.
I'll follow if it's okay with you, man.
So you go second? Yeah. Good to go.
Right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure to be in front of you this, this evening to present our training tower at Station Seventeen on Service Road. This project, we've been working on for a couple of years, so it's exciting to finally bring it back to council.
The mission statement does not look like it's in English.
Yeah.
Is there, is there an issue with con, con, bringing that? Okay. Would you just love technology?
Yeah. There we go.
There you go, I could read that.
All right, Council, our mission is the, as your fire department, we are a professional, community service-driven organization that provides all risk and moving services to meet the needs of our community. As a regional leader in innovation and training in the fire service, our mission is to serve, protect, and partner with you for a safer community. Our mission directly reflects this training tower.
Don't worry, we'll be patient.
Sorry.
Don't worry about it.
Okay. I want to provide everyone with a little background tonight as how we got to where we're at today. In 2019, City of Series with its partners formed a three-year training MOU. This own MOU created a new training facility along with training officers to provide training to four different organizations. The Series Fire Department at the time, Modesto Fire Department, Stanislaus Consolidated, and the Salida Fire Protection District. In 2021, we developed a contract for service with the Modesto Fire Department to provide full contract services for the City of Series. In twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year, uh, a CIP was created for Phase One for Station Three for several projects out at, at, uh, Station Seventeen. And I'm just going to jump back right here to 2019 to the training MOU. In the training MOU, each partner would provide for the training program. So the City of Series had a facility that wasn't being used. It was downstaffed in approximately 2018 when there was a layoff of firefighters and the station was closed. The station became vacant and was basically used for, uh, storing equipment, used construction material from city projects, and really turned into, uh, uh, tumbleweeds, um, it turned into a mess. The station was slowly inundated with varmints and insects, and it was just really in bad shape at that time. But through, but Sid, the City of Series having this facility could contribute to this partnership. And Modesto Fire Department, Stanislaus Consolidated, and Salida would provide the manpower to, to man the training division. In 2022, an extension was given on this training MOU for five years, and the Turlock Fire Department was brought in for the five-year agreement. And in 2023, we're going to go out for RFP for, or excuse me, the RFP for the Tower Foundation. This right here is our board chart for the training division. We have a division chief from Turlock Fire, a captain from Modesto, a captain from Stanislaus Consolidated Fire, an engineer from Modesto, and a firefighter from Modesto. And the training division is overseen by one of our deputy chiefs, Chief Jelneck, who's here in the audience tonight. And you can see by pooling our resources together, we're able to provide a high level of training. If you take a look at the training grounds, this is what it used to look like. If you look closely, you can see some light poles out there, construction debris, equipment that was stored out there, uh, lots of tumbleweeds, and, uh, the place was basically deserted. And this is actually taken when we actually started doing some cleaning out there already. So this wasn't as bad as it once was. The transformation of the training center. Salida Fire Protection District and the Modesto Fire Department donated containers or props out there. These props were used for various trainings from ventilation to, uh, forcible entry, firefighter search and rescue. Other props, maybe you'll see to the right, were used for, uh, for fires, simulating fires and having fires and, and part of our fire control program. All the work with the containers was done by our own personnel. All the welding, all the cutting, and all the construction was done by our personnel. Today, this is what the training facility looks like. On a, on a given, any given day, we could have a fire academy with up to thirty personnel, and we could have the regular fire department personnel running through the training center. I believe at one time last year, we trained a hundred and fifty firefighters one day at this facility. Besides responding to emergency operations, training is one of the most important things we can do in public safety. As you can see here, they're working on the various props, uh, commercial structure prop, a residential structure roof, and ventilating. We use these props daily to enhance our training. This is a rendition of what the, the training prop would look like. You could see it has a three-story main body with a one container on a fourth story. Give you some different views of it. It's going to have an interior and exterior stair, stairway. But why go to a container training prop? First and foremost is the durability of training props. The configurability for our training needs allows for training that we currently do not have the ability to perform with other props. If you take a look around the City of Series and other nearby jurisdictions, we have multifamily dwellings and commercial buildings that are throughout these, uh, these cities and jurisdictions, and they are target hazards for us with a high life rescue. They're interchangeable, they'll have interchange, excuse me, interchangeable doors, windows, and walls. We take minimal maintenance, and they allow for future expansion if we want to configure them different down the road. They're dynamic and realistic options to enhance our training. So some of the advantages for our training. Above-ground hose stretching and simulated multifamily dwellings with interior and exterior stairways. Truck company, airail operations. Search and rescue for commercial and residential scenarios. On top of the fourth story, uh, and the containers will be a repelling station for technical rescue operations. And also, this prop can be used for our, our, uh, law enforcement partners for their SIMS training to simulate different situations in apartment or commercial settings. Estimated cost for the training prop is at 1.2 million. This includes a ten percent contingency, the foundation, the tower, pavement, and reseal of existing pavement at the training grounds, associated inspections. Each agency in the training MOU will contribute to the overall cost. So in the training MOU, you have the City of Series, the City of Turlock, the Stanislaus Consolidated Fire Protection District, and the City of Modesto. Also contributing to the training tower are our other fire partners. The Regional Fire Authority, uh, which is part of Stanislaus County, and the Modesto Junior College, who we're going to partner with for training. Series would contribute from the Fire Facility Fund. This fund is derived from impact fees derived from new construction or permits that are pooled. The Fire Facility Fund can only be utilized for fire facilities. Together, we achieve. Yeah, I'm ready for any questions.
Kevin, you wanted to jump in?
Thank you, Mayor, uh, council members. The site improvements for the Public Safety Training Facility, or what I call the Fire Training Facility that Chief Weiss, uh, presented, is, uh, there was a public solicitation held for the site improvements that, uh, I think it occurred in summer of 2022, and Maco, Machado and Sons Construction was the apparent lowest bidder. We've been in contact him for over a year, and he is, uh, he's interested and still doing, doing the work, and he's held out his bid. I think that there was a small, uh, prevailing weight cost increase, but, uh, we'd like to put forth his proposal in, at this time. Due to funding constraints and design layout changes of the tactical container design, construction was delayed, and over the last year, local agencies have pledged approximately eight hundred thousand dollars. Due to the securing of additional funding partners, the city staff is pleased to report that the site improvement contractor has held his proposal and desires to be considered to provide the site improvements, which includes demo, site grading, foundation, and miscellaneous piping with the fire hydrant. The total amount requested for the site work improvement is a hundred and seventy thousand and seventy-three dollars, which includes a ten percent contingency. The total estimated cost for the facility is 1.2 million dollars. Staff has also noted an inadvertent error in the table presented in the staff report. On the second page, if you would care to turn to that table, uh, I have to admit that I didn't know the difference between the regional fire authority, the RFA, and how Stanislaus County was represented. There's a duplicate of three hundred and twenty-five thousand represented. You would draw a line through the regional fire authority contribution, then you would have the proper table. Staff request council to approve the award of the site improvement contract with Machado and Sons Construction for a hundred and seventy thousand and seventy-three dollars, which includes a ten percent contingency. I'll take questions, um, if there are any.
We'll move to the public first. Is there any members of the public would like to make a comment or a question? You guys are ready, go for it.
Good evening, council members, John Warren, City of Series. I had a couple of questions in it regarding, some of it was the funding on page two. It appears that the City of Series was going to pay the largest share, four hundred thousand dollars. The Regional Fire Authority, three twenty-five. Stanislaus County, three twenty-five. MJC, two hundred and fifty. When I added those up, it came up to 1.3 million dollars, which is different than the 1.2 million dollars. The total estimated project cost is about 1.2 million. Um, not very specific. I don't like wordage like that when you're dealing with a contract. Um, it should be what the cost is. Um, but I do kind of understand some of that. On that page two, the City of Modesto isn't paying anything. City of Turli, Turlock is not paying anything. And Stanislaus Consolidated is not paying anything. They have TBD after their, uh, their names, which is to be determined. I really think that if you're dealing with a contract, the City of Modesto or the City of Series is going to initiate, it's going to be in our name. Um, when I looked at some of the letters, uh, in the staff report uh, that indicated how payment was going to be made by the other jurisdictions, some of the other jurisdictions were using grant money, and it wasn't determined how grant money was going to be applied and what the rules are. We all know with grants, there are certain restrictions and things. So if the City of Series is going to be responsible for the 1.2 million bucks because we're letting the contract, we should have all the specifics about how funding is going to be paid to our city and how much each agency or each department is going to be paying. At the very least, if you have seven involved agencies, you take the total amount and divide it by seven. So everybody's paying an equal share. We're all aware that the City of Series owns that property and owns all the buildings there. And that's a large contribution to the pot in the very beginning because that's several million dollars worth of real estate and, uh, and infrastructure. And to have us paying the largest share to begin with doesn't seem quite fair. At least everybody should pay the same amount. If it's going to cost them 1.3, you divide it by, uh, seven, and you come out to about a hundred and eighty-six thousand bucks. According to my math. But that's just my thought. I don't think we should jump into anything until all the specifics are there. People are using grant money, then we need to make sure that everything with the use of that grant money, matching funds and all that sort of thing are in place. Thank you very much.
Weiss, would you like to answer some of his questions? I've also had some things to add.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for your questions, Mr. Warren. Uh, first and foremost, what was presented tonight is not a contract for the tower, contract for the groundwork for the tower. The, the tower is going to go out to bid, and we will, before we start any construction, that's going to come back to council for approval. And also, as Kevin, uh, mentioned tonight, there was a typo in the staff report that duplicated the Regional Fire Authority, which is the, a body that did, that decides how the less than county white tax is spent by the county. So with the, the total funding that, that has come from Stanislaus County, Modesto Junior College with the grant, and I'll explain the grant in just a second. And the City of Series, it comes to nine hundred and seventy-five thousand. Before, once we get the bid for the tower, we will go to the three remaining agencies, Turlock, Modesto, and Stanislaus Consolidated, and we will come back with the other funding, the, the remaining funding for the project, which is approximately 225,000 dollars estimated right now. But that's just an estimate. We're actually going to go out to bid and get a firm price and come back to the council for approval. Um, the grant, the grant that was obtained by Modesto Junior College for this product, project, the only requirement in the grant is that we have an MOU with the City of Series so that the, the college students can use the tower for their training. We will bring that back to council also for approval. And then as far as equal share goes, uh, we had to look for different funding mechanisms to get this, this, uh, project approved. And, um, the City of Series has the Fire Facility Fund, and it can only be used for fire facilities. The county was willing to contribute 325,000, and Modesto Junior College was gracious enough to commit to 250,000 for this project, and we will share the rest, the rest of the funding, whatever it is, with the three remaining partners.
This facility is ours. We, the City of Series owns the, this facility.
Yes.
So these investments are for us, when we're receiving money from MJC, we're receiving money from the county, it's going towards that facility and for a good use. We're actually using CIP funds, 400,000 dollars CIP visitor that came from the 2021, 2022 school year. We brought it over, and then we had another hundred thousand, which makes it a total of 400,000 dollars. That's where, that's where the money is coming from, it's not coming from a general fund. We brought it over and then we had another hundred thousand, which makes it a total four hundred thousand dollars. That's where, that's where the money is coming from. It's not coming from a general funds. I just wanted to make that a point. Is there anybody else that would like to make a comment in the audience? No? I bring this back to council. I do have some buttons pressed and I'll go ahead and start with, uh, Councilmember Rosalinda. The floor is yours. You think you're last? I'll just go left to right if you don't mind. I, I was not paying. Mr. Martinez, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so, so like the mayor just said, we own the station, so we would have that oversight over it. That's, that's series property. Uh, but, but training, it evolves. The current fire tower that they use at MJC is twenty-seven years old. So building this structure would allow them to adapt, uh, to, to make the training more realistic. Uh, they'll be able to, it's modular, right? You'll be able to create different situations, put our firefighters through different tests. Uh, then we'll also be able to say that, you know, the City of Series is producing the firefighters that are protecting the community and the county. Uh, we'll get to enjoy the fact that firefighters moving forward, graduating from these academies are coming from series fire station. So that's something that we can appreciate. Uh, so I, I support it. I do appreciate Mr. Warren's concerns about the finances, but knowing that, that it allows our potential future firefighters, uh, the chance to adapt their training, to learn new training. And police also uses this, uh, location as well, chief. They'll have the ability to train there. So, uh, I support it a hundred percent and I'm very glad that we're going to be able to get this, God willing, get this taken care of.
Vice Mayor, floor is yours.
Yeah, to piggyback on what the mayor said, this money, this four hundred thousand that we've targeted towards this project has already been included in the last couple of budget cycles and the capital improvement account. And tonight we are only actually approving the roughly one hundred seventy thousand dollar for the groundwork and infrastructure type work for this tower, not the actual tower, correct, Kevin? Thank you.
Rosalinda, the floor is yours.
All right, um, I guess it kind of been, it's been clarified briefly, I guess my just clarification, because I think you said it was going to go out to bid, so the numbers would change. And I think, believe the other cities, the reason why there's no total is because the cities haven't been approved by the council the amount yet. Is that correct?
That is correct. And when we go to the other councils, we wanted to go to them with a firm number.
Okay, so is it possible that our numbers could change down or are they pretty well set? They're not going to go higher?
Yes, that's correct. I mean, you can never say never, but let's be hopeful they go down.
Thank you.
Councilmember Casey, the floor is yours.
I've been on the council for two years and I'm still learning. I, I want to, I want to understand that what we're doing now is permitting you to go to bid. And then you're going to come back to us and say, this is what the bid is and this is what it's going to cost the City of Series. Does that summarize this presentation?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Councilmember Casey, uh, what I have is a contractor that has held his bid for an unusually long period of time, take advantage of, uh, uh, tremendous, uh, savings. If you look at the table that presented in the attachments, he was, uh, nearly a fifty thousand less than the next, this bid. And it's such a great time to actually take advantage of this. He's not raising the cost of concrete or, or materials. He, uh, is, I think it's unusual that a contractor will hold a bid for over a year. He really wants to work with us. We're going to get a foundation that is will be utilized by a container manufacturer. They all work in forty-foot containers. So the design has already been, uh, approved by the structural engineer. And it's just a matter of tactical container suppliers bidding for this job. And I believe that between, uh, Chief Weiss and I, we'll come back, uh, to council with firm numbers, not only on our funding, but on, uh, proposals. I will get three, hopefully three, uh, interested bidders in this project and, and, uh, I will come back for approval on that.
Okay, so, so we're, we're moving the process to get started. But we haven't committed a financial obligation because we're going to wait for a firm number so that we can go to the other entity to get their, their input. Are, are we making a commitment to spend this four hundred thousand dollars?
You, your council or members of your council have approved my CIP project for this, this very project over the last two fiscal years. I have four hundred thousand dollars encumbered for this project. I don't expect to ask for more.
Thank you.
I bring this back to the council for motion.
Moved to approve.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey?
No.
Councilmember Vera?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Silveira?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion carries four one.
There is no discussion items. Moving on to council member referrals. Council member request to have an agenda item placed on the future agenda pursuant to chapter two city council meetings, J eight. City council referrals determination of items on the agenda. One, two, three, four, four previous, uh, council referrals on top of, I have a new one here today, so we'll start off with the first one. The first one, item number eleven is proposing a four-way stop sign at Roading Road and Ninth Street. Requesting referral by Vice Mayor Silveira at the September eleventh, twenty twenty-three city council meeting. I believe all we need is a consensus, correct? Nubia?
A consensus to direct staff to prepare the necessary items to bring this for action.
That is correct. Left to right. Is there a comment?
Uh, Mr. Warren, I believe had a comment for this one.
Okay, sure, we could actually, is that something we could, we should do or?
We should open, we should open up the council member referrals for public.
Tell me, Martinez, thank you for reminding me. Mr. Warren, floor is yours, sir.
Uh, this was brought up because of, uh, vision obstruction if you're southbound on Ninth Street. You stop at that stop sign, even if you pull forward quite a bit, your vehicle is all the way out in the intersection before you can see traffic coming from the, uh, going westbound. And part of it has to do with what the homeowner has put up behind that cyclone fence. Cyclone fence in itself is, I believe, in compliance. I think from what I see and looking at that particular property, that the homeowner has probably done just about everything that the city's asked him to do as far as trimming the bushes and stuff. It's just the placement of all the things behind the chain link fence in the yard that causes the vision obstruction. And that was why my original suggestion to the city is placing a four-way stop sign there to correct that vision problem. So we don't have a catastrophe happen. And I think, uh, Mr. Silveira recognized that, uh, because he did mention that, that, uh, we probably needed a four-way stop sign there and working on the project. Well, that's just my thoughts, uh, before something happens. I don't know how long a project like that takes to buy two stop signs and put them up. But I think it probably involves more than just sending the city crew out there with some bolts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Is there any additional persons in the audience that would like to make a comment on item number eleven? Kevin, sir.
And thank you, Mayor, and council members. I am pleased to, uh, actually, uh, put forth a proposal that we're actually going to provide a warrant study for not only, uh, the, uh, intersection of Roading and Ninth Street. We're also going to be, uh, uh, doing a, a warrant study, which is a stop sign analysis of the intersection for Third and North. That was, uh, referred earlier, uh, last month. So, uh, those two are on the agenda, uh, as an informational only. We've, I've secured two proposals from our on-call consultants. And, uh, we would like to just inform you that we're proceeding with that, a warrant study. Yes, Mr. Warren, it is true that you can't put up a stop sign without a study to verify that. And I, I am not sure exactly how many days that's going to take to actually complete the warrant study. But the, the one that we had done on Morris, uh, Moore and Service, it took, uh, about two months to get that data done and, and a report generated. Um, but we are, I'm going to, uh, you know, go forth with the recommendation. And, uh, we'll do whatever they say, uh, is necessary to make that a safe intersection.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Warren, you do know how slow government is, so patience. I really greatly appreciate the patience that you have. Okay, so I bring this back to the council, unless there's anybody else in the audience, I'll ask if there's anybody else.
Mr. Mayor?
Would you like to add something? Go ahead.
Just real quick, I want to clarify what my director of engineering was saying. If you all pass this tonight, then we'll bring back a staff report later on.
Yes.
Including both of them together.
Correct.
Waiting for your decision tonight.
That's correct. That's consensus. Okay, left to right and consensus, Mr. Casey consensus, but okay. And we're good to go. Item number twelve is proposing the cameras to be installed at Independence Park. And this was a referral by Councilmember Vera. Ms. Vera, would you like to add anything to this?
Yes, um, the, Independence Park has been creating an increase in police response. Our care team is now visiting weekly and trying to address some of the situations we're seeing, including criminal activity and drug use in the daylight. Uh, patrol has been going out there to address some of this. When I did my ride along, there were four officers that responded due to the number of individuals that were there in the park that evening. Turning points, had to also call patrol due to the illegal activity that was taking part in the park when they were out there, um, talking to the homeless or unhoused and other individuals that were there in the park. I'm hoping that we can actually, see if we can actually try to find some funding, whether it's ARPA grants or other ways to add a camera in there to try to help our police and try to minimize the illegal activity that's occurring in our public parks and next to a complex that's full of children. Thank you.
Rosalinda, thank you very much. Is there anybody in the public who would like to make a comment? See and none. Uh, back to actually city manager, we had like an off conversation about this, maybe a consultation, see if Ms. Vera would be interested in what we talked about.
Yeah, I meant to, uh, reach out to the chief of police and do we have any movable cameras or portable cameras, chief? That we can move in this park on a temporary basis?
Okay, thank you, chief. You have the most patient out of all of us, sir. Thank you. Rosalinda, if, that is just a thought that we had in conversation. I figured that it would be a smart idea to see what we can do with the temporary camera, which we already have without spending additional funds. Okay, well, so bring this back to council for consensus from left break. Okay with it? And we're all good to go. Okay, moving on to item number three, proposing a citywide yard sale. And this was also by Ms. Vera. Floor is yours.
Okay, so this proposal actually came from a community member who's been here the last couple of meetings. Um, it was basically, I'm looking at just like one community event, one time, once a year. Um, that's added on to what they have now, similar to what they do in the surrounding cities. But they would have to come in and get their free permit. They would go over the signed rules, the signing, and also go over the other rules that are currently in our ordinance. Um, as well as possibly the phone numbers to our bulk disposal, so they can also get that scheduled to the following Monday. I think they usually come out on Mondays. Um, and so that way they can all just, or maybe work with chance and maybe have a community, um, disposal, maybe the following weekend or that same weekend, so that way they can have their yard sale, maybe sign up for future yard sales at the current cost or whatever it is at the time. And then possibly get rid of whatever items are not sold or given away to a nonprofit. But I do want to make sure they go over the same process. And then possibly just have a website, similar to, Turlock has a nice one online that allows you to just go online and actually see where the yard sales are and that are permitted, which also kind of minimizes the people, the need for signs because it's already on the website with the addresses. And I think Houston did a really good job this year, as well as having a city map and kind of having it marked off where all the participants were. So that way it was also minimizing the need for signs, but they had to register by a certain day that gave cities got adequate time to actually put all that together. And that's kind of my idea.
Okay, bringing this back to the public. Is there any comments in the public? Mr. Yake?
Yakeley Series. Good idea. Problem is, is if you've lived here long enough, you know that most people don't go by the rules. And how are you going to take care of this? When people are going through the different streets with the people that supposedly have permits and then the people that don't? And, uh, possible residue that's going to be created afterwards is going to be responsible for that.
Thank you. Does anybody else like to make a comment? See and none, bring this back to the council. I would like to mention something before we continue. And we could also, Rosalinda, just to add to your idea, this could be, also be an educational campaign. We can possibly use, you know, an opportunity by code enforcement to go out there as we're taking for permits and showing everyone the process. And if we were smart, we'll use online capabilities more so that we save obviously paper because, uh, because it can be, it can be a costly matter. I, I think that the, does the public, being in this economic state that we're in, wants these kind of opportunities so they can make a little money, get rid of some old junk. Maybe on top of that, donate the rest that they don't sell. I don't see anything wrong with having a citywide yard sale. I think that would be a great thing. Yeah, Silveira?
I think it's a great idea too, just as long as there's little or no cost to the city and very, very little staff time included to do whatever we have to do on the website that you were speaking of. Yeah, it's a great idea.
Which is, okay. So i- is it safe to say, uh, Doug, that you bring back some, some information? I know that Silveira says, you know, let's try to figure out the cost of this. I know that even if I mention educational campaign and code enforcement, that's going to take money and time. But at least as long as all the options are on the table.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you very much. Okay, going to item number fourteen, creating a downtown streets team. This is also requested by Councilmember Vera. The floor is yours.
Okay, so with this one, as you know, we do have been encountering some homeless town and some encampments. Currently, we have care that's been working through to address some of their needs and work with those, um, that are causing public nuisances. Um, but there are different types of homeless situations. There's those that want to be homeless and those that would like to try to move into shelter, transitional shelters. Um, so it's a matter of just connecting the resources to those that are ready to take the next step. Um, and whether it's those that are ready to get into, work with care to get into the new step. And I've been working, I've already spoke with the downtown street team in Modesto. I have a meeting coming up with the county with Rubin Imperial, um, with the new law that's changing, with the process of the law that's going to change it may with ABSB one twenty-nine passing. If it does pass it, we have to be more proactive, I think, and reactive to the new laws. And it would actually, I wanted to see if we could maybe see if we can get some cost or grants. Because what it is, is the people in the program, the individuals generally are in. I don't have the HMIS numbers here, but just going on my ride along, it looks like I'm reading the code enforcement numbers. It looks like we have about thirty to fifty that are pretty stationary in this town. I guess it's a good way of putting um, our current homeless situation of those that are here consistently. Um, and with the downtown street teams right now, which I believe we may be able, working with the county, talking with Jody Hayes and working with Rubin Imperial, we may be able to coordinate with Modesto's efforts in the county. Because he wants to expand the services actually throughout the county. Um, it obviously wouldn't be anywhere near as big as what Modesto has. But what it is, is they're allowed to, uh, volunteer up to six hundred hours. They give them designated areas such as parks, cleaning up encampments, parking lots and other areas. They have to wear a uniform, show up on time. They, uh, provide their own supervisors in exchange of their service or their volunteer hours. They do get a Walmart gift card and/or bill pay assistance, which allows them to maybe coordinate to pay their cell phone bill. Um, but again, I don't know if this is going to be possible without, you know, talking to see where the funding would come from, what coordination we can also do with the county, uh, with the chief executive offered, Jody Hayes has offered his support as well as I believe supervisor conduct. It seems very supportive of the idea. And just kind of want to continue the, uh, coordination and collaboration and supporting those that do want to get off of the streets and possibly move into transitional housing or into a shelter. And regain on some of those job skills and techniques that are necessary when you move into a permanent situation.
Thank you, council member. Anybody in the audience that would like to make a comment on this item? See and none, bringing this back, Mr. Silveira, before we move on to you. Uh, Doug, we had spoken offline about the possibility of looking into this to some continued efforts on homeless that we're bringing to the table in the next two months. I think that this is an item we can take a look at too.
Yes, sir. So right now, I, Councilmember Vera and I have attended a little webinar and training video, or video, but webinar uh, the streets team and video or video webinar, uh, the streets team and what it costs, what they do and everything. Uh, also been involved with the Police Chief and the Captain are uh, pretty robust uh, homeless plan coming forward. I was uh, talking with you. And we're gonna be making a presentation, or they are gonna be making a presentation on November thirteenth. We can put all that together and give the council various options on how to move forward in handling the situation. So November thirteenth, we're anticipating having you a lot of options and giving you all the other areas that uh, we can look at.
Yeah, Rose Linda, you had mentioned that this could be costly. What was the cost?
It would need to come out, because I met at when you were at um, League of Cities, so they, again, it depends on how much we can collaborate, which I am not meeting with Rubin Imperial until Friday. So I won't know how much Modesto is willing or the county is willing to support the efforts, nor have they even come out, because we haven't moved that far to even do an estimate of what the needs are here in the city and how much time would even be needed if it's just once a week, once every other week, all of that would impact the costs. Um, as well as other funding, because I do know they do have some state funding, they got some funding from Alanis's office from the federal, so they have different funding sources, but again, it's we haven't even had that discussion yet. We haven't moved that far um, into the discussion at this point. It has been mentioned as Casey and I are both on the Stanislaus Housing Alliance, so we do meet monthly together and we go over different ordinances and proposals, laws and opportunities in the county that we could utilize in our different cities.
Okay. Mister Silvera, the floor is yours.
Yeah, this did come up um, at the Cal Cities Conference a couple of weeks ago, several different examples of it. Uh, they were all grant funded, excuse me, and or volunteer, and I think it'd be fantastic. Just as long as we're not adding more duties to our existing staff to supervise this or taking general fund or any money out of our budget to, to do it. This is a fantastic idea and it's blowing up around the country. City of Modesto received an award for a team that they have that's similar to this. Uh, but it has to be grant funded or volunteered and make sure we don't pile something else onto our city staff. Manage it.
Venus?
Yeah, I agree with the Vice Mayor. I support the idea, but it's got to be funded from some outside source or volunteer driven. I don't think we can put uh, additional stress load on our police or our city staff run this program.
When I met with them, they are self-supervised, so they have their own staff that realize they work directly with Modesto's. Right now, they work with their chief and the city manager to determine the key areas, and then in the event that it needs to change, they come forward and let them know what areas may be the new target now for the day or the week or the month or whatever, such as they may have a special event. And they want the street cleaned for the lighting, the Christmas tree light there, and now they will go clean those areas. I mean, that's kind of how they work it now, Modesto, and I've been there and I've heard the success stories. I've talked with many of the homeless that are currently working through the program to get into transitional. Um, there on Wednesdays, they have a meeting and they've welcomed us to come in and just see how it operates. Um, usually they promote within, so the person that started cleaning will then be promoted to supervisor, so they're self-supervising. They have one paid, obviously they're paid staff, they also have paid caseworkers and they also work with other agencies in the county to um, oversee the various individuals in the program.
Thank you. Mister Casey, any comments? Okay, so it sounds like we have a consensus, correct? Did you go? Thumbs up? Okay. And I hate to do this, but yes, I'm gonna add a referral as where, uh, well, so earlier we had uh, removed the Economic Development Strategic Plan. I think that it's important that we create a workshop with the Joint City Council and Planning Commission Workshop to go over the strategy so that we're all on the same page. I think that that would be a great opportunity, because I know that everybody on this council believes strongly on economic development in our community. And it would be a great opportunity to, to work with our commissioners in that workshop so we can have a similar vision. So if uh, the city council has consensus? Thumbs up? Yes, you may.
Um, I guess the only question which kind of goes to a possible referral that I was thinking about bringing up next and maybe this can tie in.
Okay.
Is I believe they're kind of working on trying to revitalize downtown. Bringing in nightlife, maybe bringing in some other stuff. Um, so that kind of ties in also the need for safety, maybe cameras and other stuff, as we're seeing the increased traffic, increased families there. And especially families there, or individuals there later at night as we revitalize and try to increase traffic in our downtown area. I'd like to kind of maybe bring in public safety as well. Um, just so that we can make sure that everyone, if we are revitalizing and focusing on certain areas and not just downtown, obviously if we're working together. And we're also making sure everyone's safe in those areas as well.
That, that could be added to that strategic plan that I felt that we needed to, to continue to revise, because I just didn't feel that that plan was representative of this current city council. Okay, we have consensus, Mister, just want to make sure Casey, you're good. You good with that?
I, I'd like to follow up on the uh.
We're fine. You can go ahead and do your referral as well if you have a. You're good, okay. Okay, well, for that being said, we're moving on to reports. I have nothing to report, I mean, with the exception of, I know that uh, the Vice Mayor and Councilmember are going to be at the barbecue festival. I will also be a judge there as well. So I'm looking forward to doing that with you guys. I didn't want to steal, steal the shine. But I just want to let you guys know. And with that being said, that is the only actual report that I have, so any other council members have reports?
I just want to, one more time, remind everybody that the trunk of treats coming up pretty soon. Uh, it's gonna be more from two to four. Uh, last meeting, I said two to five, I was incorrect, it's two to four. Phenomenal event. Safe, you can bring your children out, have a good time. Uh, I know of myself, there will be a booth out there. I believe Councilmember Vera will be volunteering at a booth. Uh, I know that our fire department is gonna also have a booth out there, so it's a great event, it's one of my favorite, my children have a blast every year. Uh, so looking forward to seeing everybody out there.
Thank you. Silvera, anything? Vera? Are you sure, are you sure you don't have anything? Just teasing. Mister Casey?
Uh, I'd like to report the last Saturday on September. They had a uh, blog for suicide. And uh, our community participated in it and they were able to pay over sixty-eight thousand dollars. Thank you, community, thank you.
That deserves a round of applause, that's great. Thank you very much. Moving on to City Manager, do you have anything?
I have nothing to report, sir.
Okay, Nubia, do you have anything to add?
Nothing to add.
Okay, Department Heads, do you have anything to add? Oh, you, sir?
Uh, Mister Mayor, uh, City Council, I just want to let you know that the Leaf and Lim Disposal Pickup Service has started uh, October first and land on January ninth, twenty twenty-four.
Awesome. Thank you very much. I don't mean to put Joey on the spot, but what is the current update with the Military Banner Program as far as bringing that back to the council for the next location?
So we have, we have a total of fourteen banners. I actually picked up all the banners in Harp today. Probably get, working with Streets tomorrow to get those in, in placement. Um, we have like five spots right here on Third Street and into the park. And we also are gonna be attending Hatch and also over the, Overpass. Um, so.
How many, how many on Hatch will, will be available?
Um, that's what, I, I'm gonna get a, do a ride along with Al from Streets
Uh huh.
This week and, and just make sure the placement of.
So you're saying the downtown Series?
Yes.
Hatch Road?
Hatch Road.
And where else?
Going over to the Overpass to the cemetery, there's nineteen spots there.
So nineteen spots there, so, so, so the committee had consensus and now they're kind of spreading out?
Yes.
How many more applicants did we receive besides?
Only have fourteen new ones.
Fourteen new ones?
Yes.
Okay. Now, was this, was there a plan to bring this to the city council for approval?
No.
So there was no plan? Okay, and, and this is already gonna happen, I don't want to.
Yeah, no, we're gonna, we're actually having a meeting on uh, Wednesday at um, two o'clock.
Okay. Um, maybe just a, just an email with the correct information to the city council as far as the location of the new banners?
Yes.
That'd be great. And there is going to be a ceremony, from my understanding, in November or no?
No.
So no ceremony?
So the, the ones that we have up, there's a total of thirty-four that are up now. Um, there's emails that's been out for several months and they, like they continue to keep them up for another.
Awesome. Okay, I know some of, some of the committee members are here, just wanted to thank you guys. I appreciate that, all the time and effort you guys put into this.
Yeah, so there's a total of fourteen new ones that are got.
Fourteen new ones.
I picked them up this morning.
Okay, that, okay, so this is the city council, okay, with receiving some information on location of these banners? Okay, well, thank you, Joey. I appreciate that. Good thing I asked.
Yes, and those will go up uh, the week of November tenth.
For the week of November tenth?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Joey. Are, are you? Councilmember, you trying to go back to your report? Okay, I guess she did have something after all. Uh, do you mind waiting one second, Kevin? No, I'd rather you go being, that we can go back to departments.
All right. Um, wanted to touch on, um, and Christopher Holmes was with me with the Opportunity Stanislaus this week. We did get praised for how efficient we are and the timeliness compared to other counties. So I was really glad to hear that. They did state that there's been a change in business trends. And they're more to, especially with some changes now in the upcoming law minimum wage. They wanted to go more to the QRCs, so more of a Dutch Bros type bill, less of the sit in and have your fast food type meal inside McDonald's. So they're seeing the trend coming to this county. Um, and then also there just wanted to touch on the annual Kabati. I believe it's how it's pronounced. Had a blast. It was a great event. I didn't hear too many problems at all from the police or public safety and um, I just want to think how well that went, how hopefully we can work better on parking. But other than that, we had a lot of people come into the city. We didn't have any issues or any other concerns from that event, and it was nice to see all those people really enjoying the city of Series. And those were it, and then I did get ten the power of the purse this last week um, to show support for women here in Stanislaus County, continued economic growth here in the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Rose Linda. Kevin?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say that we received a, a really nice note from a resident on Rose Avenue for our Moro Village uh, Phase Two project. Um, she congratulated us on a job well done. A second, it was one of your um suggestions is that we install signage on uh, the Smyrna Park project.
Correct.
Um, Sam has uh, received the banners and uh, I asked him after DigSafe, that their layout for uh, utility and uh, interference uh, locating, we'll get those signs up, uh, hopefully this.
That sounds great.
Yeah, they'll, they'll be large signs.
Awesome, I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else from departments? Okay, Mister Supervisor, do you have any comments, sir? Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just have a quick report regarding our upcoming Community Cleanup Day. We do have a time and a location, so the the date will be November fourth, which is a Saturday. It will be held from seven AM to one PM. And just like last time, uh, Buralotti will be bringing those big uh, long bins on rotation until one PM on that Saturday. It will be held at the Behavioral Health Center on Richland Avenue, which I believe the address is nineteen oh four Richland Avenue. And we hope to top uh, last year's Cleanup Day, which we accumulated uh, twenty-one bins overall. And of course, that was held over at uh, Central Valley High School, and so maybe we'll double it this year, who knows? But we would like to partner with the city and promoting um, that day, the Community Cleanup Day. We will be producing a flyer soon. And then we had also asked that our uh, community members circulated on social media as well to, of course, encourage turnout and trying to combat blight and trash across the city of Series. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Uh, yes. Fallon, is it possible to reach out to Chance's office to make sure we receive that flyer? You know, you'll get all the support from me. When I went out there last time, I, it was amazing what you guys did out there. There was so much trash that was picked up. I mean, yeah, I left kind of sore, but I think that I'll be fine this time when I go out there again.
Volunteers are definitely encouraged. Um, we, we definitely need volunteers. I, myself and volunteers are like the mayor are out uh, actually throwing the trash from uh, from the trucks into the bin, so definitely need volunteers, volunteers, I would appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Is there any, any questions for the Supervisor?
One more, one more time Supervisor, kind of what day was that?
It's gonna be Saturday, November fourth.
Thank you, sir.
I believe that's the first Saturday of November, and again, it's from seven AM to one PM at nine, nineteen oh four Richland Avenue, which is the County Behavioral Health Center.
Okay. Thank you very much, Chance. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, guys. Have a good evening.
You too. Is there anybody else who would like to make a comment? On Alanis's office, is there any additional comments? Thank you.
Good evening, Councilmembers and Mayor. Uh, first, I want to start off by telling the mayor happy birthday. We just noticed that. I hope you had a beautiful, wonderful birthday and celebrated. Um, but I just wanted to give a quick Alanis bill update. So the Assembly Member had AB two four three, which is Public Protection for Child Adoption. We also have AB two five five, Priority College Registration for First Responders. Uh, we're currently still waiting for the Governor to either veto or sign those bills. He has till October fifteenth to decide. But we have AB three five five, Streamlines Rifle Training Standards for Law Enforcement Cadets and Academies. SB ten seventy-four protects California Horse Racing Industry and AB fourteen six seven, Nevada's Youth Sports Safety Act, were all signed by the Governor. Um, and then just this past week, uh, SB ten seventy-four was just the most recent one.
Thank you. Thank you for those updates. Thank you very much. Do you have a good update? Go for it.
Hey, Brad, I'm a miss that I don't uh, did for veterans. Uh, stuff. But there's a veterans hotline, uh, dot nine eight eight for mental health and suicide program.
Yeah, thank you for that information. I know this is not normal, we do, but I think that's great information. Thank you, sir.
Sorry, I don't do more.
Don't worry about it.
Just.
It came to you. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Before we move on, is there anybody else who would like to make a? Is it Irene's here, I know? Thank you for taking your time to be here.
Irene Ortiz, I'm here with Grand Productions and the Series Chamber of Commerce. I just want to let everyone know that if you didn't know already, Hostless is celebrating twenty years in business here in Series. They are doing something from the fifteenth to the twenty-eighth of October. So uh, I was gonna wait a little while, but the next meeting is smack dab in the middle of that. So when you get a chance, do all your shopping there in the next two weeks. Um, they're doing raffles, giveaways, free groceries, gift cards, you name it. So um, I just wanted to bring awareness to that in case you guys didn't know.
Thank you very much. Chip. Okay. Now we will move on to closed session, Public Employment, California Government Code five four nine five seven with the City Manager. In addition to conference with labor negotiations with all the agencies that are listed on this item. Thank you very much. This meeting is now adjourned. Yes, ma'am. Is there any public comments on these items for closed session? See and none. Thank you very much and everybody, God bless. Meeting is now adjourned.